In the last meeting, we were discussing the homeowners assistance program that was available. But what it did was it actually led to us not receiving interest and penalty that we pledged before, because this is paying delinquent taxes. So it's just a really good article to give to everybody to read. It's not just our town.
We have a lot of towns that are talking about ARPA.
Yeah.
And there are committees they formulated and stuff that we like.
Especially rocking him, they seem to be on the ball.
Yeah.
So anyway, sorry, sorry Wendy. Yeah, so.
I apologize.
No, no, that's fine.
That's all right, six thirty?
It's what?
Six thirty-one.
It's nine one?
It is now, already?
It's time.
Come on.
Next time you drive a little faster.
Mine's clock says six thirty-two, I say we'll wait another, let it go around and get to an even number.
One of those six thirty-two is.
He probably doesn't step on cracks either.
His radio is always on like twenty-five or fifty, it's never like thirty-seven.
Doesn't walk under ladders.
Who are you talking about?
Nobody, I'm just kidding.
I have a black cat. So you know. I didn't realize it was that late, this is your fault.
Do you let it walk by you, or?
What's that?
Do you let it walk by, or do you make sure that you guys never cross paths?
The cat?
Yeah.
I stick it on people, it's vicious.
Conversation we never let people, never hit the volume for that somebody else. Perfect example.
These things, I don't like these things. How do I turn it on when it goes black screen?
Tap it?
Uh, it should be on the side.
Uh, tap it.
Is it dead?
Tap it worked, no, it's not dead. It's fully charged.
Bop it.
No, no. What was the number on the front, one, one, one?
No, no, no.
Yes, all ones.
A Scott needs area code with another zero.
She got a different one.
Oh, I guess I'll stay out of it then.
Like, you're all ones.
Dave's actually not coming, so if you want to sit over there when your time is up. Yep.
You could be mistaken. Sorry Dave. He's, he's supposed to be online.
He's not, he's not yet, only Jeff and June and Bill are online.
Dave does not have a camera, so it'll only be audio.
Okay.
Uh, and I, and I did talk to him about that today and assured him that my phone would be, I always turn my volumes off, but I keep my phone on.
Yep.
And I told him if, if I'm not catching on to the fact that he's trying to get my attention to call me, so if that happens, you know. That's what it is, I just have it there so I'll see him, call in so that we can get to him. All right, my apologies for being late. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Weathersfield Select Board Meeting. Today is May the second. And Paul, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance.
To comply with the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, Agenda Review, anybody need to move anything on this agenda tonight?
I would like to make a request. We, we have June and Bill Brink on, they were going to attend in person, they did notify me and say that they weren't, June's not feeling very well, so I don't know if we can move that right up to the front.
And that is the, where do I see it? Weathersfield Music Series Number Ten. Any, any objections to that? From anybody? Uh, we will take that up, um, right after comments from citizens, we'll make it Number Five.
Thank you.
Any, any other changes or, or review of the agenda by anyone? Okay, uh, comments from citizens, topics not on the agenda. Any announcements or anything from any board members? We're gonna be out of here like early tonight.
Hey Mike.
Yes.
Hey Mike.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
I can. Dave? Yep.
You got me now?
I do, yes.
Okay, it's like a nightmare trying to link on here, because there's no link to get on from the agenda sheet, and I gotta have like all this written down, and it wasn't working, so. I spoke with you today, and it's just a brief thing, that I was notified that for the public that, well, I want to announce to the public, if you look in the Vermont Business Magazine, uh, there's a very large article, I guess, I got told about it, from TDS has committed to have a major build-out in its, oh, I don't know, five or six towns, including Weathersfield, uh, for fiber, so that, that's a really big deal, and, uh, so, we've had people come in, um, expressing concerns in ARPA funds and everything, but, but when a, when one of our major providers, um, makes that announcement, it's worth noting, so.
Thank you, and I, I do recall that Dave, and I apologize for missing it, it's been kind of a hectic afternoon, uh, so thank you for bringing that back. A- a- anything else? Okay, um, Number Five, Weathersfield Music Series. Bill, you're up.
Do you guys want me to kick, kick off the discussion?
Uh, you, you, you.
All right, go ahead.
There you go.
All right, uh, so tonight, uh, Bill and June Brink will be presenting the idea to hold another Weathersfield Music Series this summer. Um, the proposal this time includes eight music events, rather than twelve events, and those would be held, uh, if approved on Friday afternoons from Jul- July eighth of 2022 to August twenty-sixth. The proposal includes to have another free pizza night, uh, water and soda and ice, um, so last summer we filled up a cooler and put free soda and, and water in there, um, and then this year, we're ahead of the games, we'd be able to figure out if we can do food trucks. Last year, the music series was primarily, uh, funded by donations, um, this year their proposal includes a request for ARPA funding. There's advertising costs, including flyers, banners, newspaper ads, raffles and giveaways, um, and we think this is a great opportunity to continue to bring the community together through outdoor recreation and music. So I'm gonna pass this along to, uh, June and Bill Brink.
Thank you Brandon, um, yes, uh, we, I'm hearing feedback on myself, but that's okay. We would like to do it again this year, we got a lot of feedback from the community, um, and I still do, and we, um, just the other day, we ran into somebody that ran up to me and asked me if we were gonna do it again this year, um, and I said, well, it all depends on the town, uh, but, um, yeah, I think this year we learned, well, last year we learned a lot, I think this year will go a little smoother, um, and I did, you know, I was able to get a lot of donations in last year, but I think because we asked for so many donations last year, um, I, I, you know, I thought it would be a good idea for the town to sponsor it this year, if they could. The estimated budget I came up with was probably a little higher than we needed, um, because we were originally thinking of doing bands, but at this late in the season where there's no way we'd be able to get bands, would probably be again a singer-songwriter, uh, maybe, um, you know, a couple more duos than we had last year. I have a list of musicians that have been contacting me throughout the winter, asking to do our event, um, some people as far away as Berry, um, and up north, that have been constantly emailing me, asking me if they could be a part of it, so we have a lot of interest, and the community is really looking forward to it. And again, this year I would do, you know, I'm willing to do all that I did last year and, um, even more, um, you know, getting, we have a little more time this year, so I'd be able to get advertising done, uh, sooner than later, and get, I, I, you know, as many musicians on board as I could. And, you know, we did learn a few things last year with the field, um, you know, without having electricity there, it was a little difficult, but we were able to have a generator that worked well, so we'd need to have a generator again, either, um, borrow one again or possibly purchase one, I'm not sure about that. You know, and there was some other issues like, uh, parking, um, so there's, there's a few things that we need to go over if this is approved, um, maybe getting a volunteer to help park, you know, and, um, you know, paying for pizza this year, because we did get it donated last year, but I, I, um, you know, hate to ask them again to do that. So, you know, I'm willing to do it all if you guys approve it, um, you know, everything that we did last year and more, uh, food trucks I think is important, that was one of the biggest things that people asked for last year. Because it was a Friday afternoon, dinnertime, people, some people were leaving because they were hungry and wanted to go get something to eat, so I think having a food truck there, um, as many times as we can, would work well, um, and bring in more people. So, that's pretty much it, do you have anything to add?
You covered it.
Do you have any questions for me?
Whole bunch.
Oh.
Well, uh, first of all, I guess I have to start here, I'm a musician and I have a band and I live in town and would, um, certainly love to play there, um, I, so I kinda have to declare that before I get too deep into any kind of discussions, uh, certainly anything that would involve, um, funding. But, this will probably break your heart, because even, as a musician, um, I, I, I do expect to get paid for my services when I play, I've done this most of my life, um, and I, I have a five-piece band, uh, and our minimum is six hundred dollars a night. I really struggle with the town, um, actually funding something like that, and particularly using something like ARPA funds, and I think about it a little bit, because, um, the, the music industry was really nailed hard, uh, I mean, we didn't work for almost a year and a half, uh, I mean, we did a few, you know, a lot of campground stuff, but bars, stuff like that, I mean, a lot of stuff closed down. So that is an industry that did get hit hard, so, you know, I, I, I mean, I get it, you know, they need help too, uh, but I, I just don't know that in, in the times we're in, I'm not sure where I would be with, with asking taxpayers, well, it's not taxpayers really, because it's ARPA, although it comes from taxpayers somehow, the government doesn't, all the money the government has belongs to us. But, I'm open for, for other discussion, a- any discussion on this, uh, I just wanted to be clear on, on where I am, as far as, uh, being an entertainer. Power parking and vans, I, I mean, last year this thing seemed to be, go over really well, um, and it was very well received, um, I don't think we had any problems over there, correct Bill? The ch- the chief is sitting over on the side here. Uh, we, we had no problems as far as I knew, um, I think it's, I think it's a great thing, I just don't know that I want to see the town or the tax, I certainly don't want to create something that's gonna end up on the backs of the taxpayers, i- at least in the future, for, for sure, maybe a little, I mean, Wendy?
So, I, I do love community events, I think they're wonderful, and I know, growing up, I was involved in a lot of them, but when we did them, we did a lot of fundraising, and a lot of stuff was volunteer. I will, I would say, I would have a hard time using ARPA funding when there is so much need, we haven't really even gotten into all the infrastructure or the buildings or, or the things that need to be done in town, that does fall on the back of taxpayers, eventually, if it's not taken care of, and I think music is wonderful, I think it's great, but I, I probably would be more concerned about using money that's, that I would probably find, um, maybe needed elsewhere, and I'd like to see that, a, a, a program like this, if there is a lot of community support and people really do love it, then if people want to donate to it, I think that's fantastic, but I, I would have to say that it would be something that I would also struggle with, not even knowing what all the needs are yet within our town and what needs to be done.
Infrastructure. Now, now, that pavilion's over there and it can be used for a lot of different things. I, I, I think we even rent it, correct?
Yes.
Right? It might not be a bad idea to, to consider that as part of the infrastructure, at least from the eighteen seventy-nine, uh, building, uh, to, to get power out there, to that pavilion, as opposed to having to either borrow, rent, or buy a generator. Just one of those things to consider and put in the list of stuff for infrastructure along the ARPA lines, uh, but I, I, I tend to agree with, with Wendy a bit, that, that, um, the, um, I, I, I like this, I like this event thing going on, I'm just not sure where I'm at with, with putting money out there, and, and I, I could be a recipient of it, I just don't think that that's a good, I just, I don't know. Paul?
Yeah, I'm kinda the same, I, I really liked the event, um, but, but I'm curious, didn't, didn't, didn't we have a couple of discussions about, I thought, was, was it a parking thing, or was it the food truck stuff that somebody tried to get there and we couldn't sell food?
We, we just, from a town health offers, officer perspective, I wasn't sure on permitting and approvals and so forth, so that would be, before we got into that, I wanted to see what the board thought, um, but yeah. That's why we didn't allow them last year, is because it, it, it does require certain approvals.
But you figured out for this year, if they needed food trucks.
There's an application and a contact list for everybody, wanna?
Yep, go ahead Wendy.
And then, just one other thing is that, you know, if, if you did something like that this year, and you invested this money using ARPA funding, and you, I, I really feel that there's, there's building blocks that need to be made, that in the, in the future, that there is some sort of, um, fundraising or something done, because there's not gonna be ARPA funding for it every year, and that's, and, and setting up a, a, a big event one year and then not being able to follow through with something that the community is showing a great interest in, I think there needs to be a way of, of, um, of, of funding it so that it can be done yearly, if this is something the community really wants.
I, I think the community does really want it, and, and I think that's where the, the funding needs to come from. Those that are involved in the, in it. Yeah, we have, what, twenty, twenty-two-hundred residents, something like that, twenty-three-hundred?
Twenty-eight, sixty-one, I checked.
I gotta write that down so it'll stick, Paul, go ahead.
What about like Parks and Recreation and like other funding from other groups that are meant more for that kind of thing, um, do they, do they?
Parks and Recreation did a thousand dollars last year, I believe.
Right, so.
Did this event?
Yeah, and I mean, I, to, to finish up what I, what I was getting at is, I, I think it's, I think it's great, but I a hundred percent agree, I, I, we haven't even figured out where this money's supposed to be going for other things, and I think there's, uh, this is important, but I don't think it's important to some of the other things that we need, um, but I'm willing to do whatever we can to help promote this, to help fundraise, to help, whatever, because I do think it's important, I just, uh, and we're not budgeting in with the money, we have some issues with budgeting right now that we're trying to figure out, so it's just one of those, um, you know, I want to support them, but just, I don't monetarily right now, would, I don't want, I, I can't support that right this second, but anything else, I'll be willing to help.
If there, Brendan, if there are any other grants that are, that are kicking around for the arts?
That's what I just was looking up actually while you were talking, um, I did see a couple of things, and, so, is the board okay with the music series if it's funded by donations?
I'm, I'm fine with it, I'm fine with the music series, I have no problem with the music series at all.
So I think, I, don't get discouraged, I think we can come together and, and come up with a plan.
I agree. I, you know, fundraised last year with, with, we have a few weeks, few weeks together, together, I was able to, you know, pay for most of it, but, uh, you know, if I had more time, I think, you know, I know someone mentioned that, we do this every year, it should be funded ahead of time, and, and fundraising should be done way ahead, um, than, you know, spring or summer, so, um, if this is something that you want to continue on, and, you know, fundraising can be done, as I think Brandon and I talked about before, we do like a tier system where we get companies to, to do tier sponsorships and, um, things like that, but that needs to be done, you know, way in advance, you can't do that with, you know, a couple months.
Yeah, these are usually done like a year and a year.
And there are companies like, uh, certain banks around that will do sponsors for different events every year, but you have to have the application in like six months or eight months ahead of time, so, i- it's doable, um, I think it's just, Brandon and I were talking about this, where it could be funded with the town, and we figured we'd start there, but there are grants and sponsorships, I mean, I did get a sponsorship last year for, I think it was twelve hundred dollars from, uh, the State of Vermont Arts Council or something.
Stages in the Sun.
Stages in the Sun, so it is doable, um, and you, you know, I can't go for them myself because I'm not a nonprofit, but, um, the town could surely, um, apply for some of these.
Let's reach out to Stages in the Sun and see if they'd be open to sponsoring us again this year, and, um, and we'll catch up throughout the week and, and develop a plan, I think, if anybody can raise money, you can, I saw it last year, I think you raised almost, I think you raised almost five thousand dollars last year, so.
We, 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 we were able to, and I'll, and I'll tell you, the community was very giving, and, you know, I even got in two newspapers on the front page, which brought in some of the donations from companies I didn't even reach out to, so.
Yep.
Uh, and people were dropping money in the bucket every week, so, um, the community definitely wants it and is willing to help sponsor it, but, um, you know, we're kinda getting punched with time, so, um, I, I, I do think that they, we may be able to try to do some sort of, um, um, sponsorship or, um, something, this, I know this, I was looking at something the other day that was a arts, something to do with arts and music, so, it's out there.
Brandon, could this, and I, I don't want to open up a can of worms, it's really gonna be a nightmare, but, when, when these things come together, uh, is it possible to have like, um, a certain number of, like, um, people that are, that make their own, um, like birdhouses and, you know, gifts or whatever, trinkets, that could set up booths, and, and, and they, they would rent a space, so they, they're paying to be there.
That's a really good idea.
But I don't know if we can do that, you gotta look into this, this property's in trust, I don't know where you can go there.
It, it is a very short period of time.
Yes.
So a lot of people wouldn't want to set up for an hour just to be there for, was it two hours, at the music festival?
That's a good one.
That's the only issue I could see.
Yep.
Well, but, but those, those, those vendors could actually set up earlier, maybe, um, what, what time does the music usually start, seven?
Six, six to eight.
Six to eight, so I mean, the, the, if the musicians are starting at six, if, if you had my band there, I'm gonna be there at two o'clock in the afternoon, and I'm not happy.
I know, well, well, we get there usually about four o'clock, so, uh, but how, you know, that's a great idea, how about doing that, um, on a different day and having the money come in to go towards the music for that?
And those are conversations you can have with Brandon, um, again, I don't, I don't, I don't think anybody here is opposed to, and I'm speaking for everybody, but I, I didn't hear anybody say they were opposed to the music series, I think we all support the series, I think it's just a matter of the funding that we're, we're a little iffy on, uh, a- as far as the town board and, and the intent of the ARPA funds and stuff, so.
Can I ask, I got a question.
Kelly?
Insurance-wise, who, who covers that insurance-wise, do we know?
Yeah, so.
To get hurt or?
Last year we did check on that, and it does go through VLCT.
Okay.
So we are covered as far as insurance goes.
Okay, I just wanted to double check.
Yep. The way that we did it last year is it went through the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Yeah.
So, and generally, Parks and Recreation Commissioners do fundraising events.
How many events did you say there were gonna be, ten?
Eight.
Eight?
It was twelve last year.
Eight?
Yeah, there'll be eight this year.
Okay, eight.
It started to get pretty, it started to get dark earlier, and, and we were out there in the dark and getting eaten by mosquitoes, we baked the last four.
Yeah, it was pretty rough. But people could still came out.
Yeah.
I brought the bug spray every day, every night.
Thirty people with umbrellas on the first day.
Yep.
Weren't you able to get like Domino's to donate free pizzas last year?
Twenty free pizzas, I, well, my son works at Domino's, so I went in and talked to his boss.
We know a guy.
Yeah, he's, and so he donated twenty pizzas, which was, you know, really generous, and they provided the heater bags and paper plates and napkins, and it was great, and I got Dunkin' Donuts to donate, uh, coffee and hot chocolate, and we got a discount on some muffins one night from J C's Market, and, um, I'm all about getting donations and having the community involved, and, and, you know, it's great advertising too for these, um, businesses too, I mean, Domino's probably got a lot of business out of it too.
Well, I, I thank you all for, um, uh, for doing that last year, a- and being willing to do it again, um, I, I think it was a great thing, series, and, uh, I thank you all for that, and, uh, keep getting with Brandon, keep working on some of this stuff, see what we can work out.
All right, well, thank you so much for taking the time and, and starting it off early, sorry I couldn't be there in person, but, um, Brandon messaged me at time and we'll meet up and, and discuss further.
Absolutely, talk to you soon.
All right. Thank you, I appreciate everything, thank you.
Get well soon.
Okay, review minutes of previous meeting, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of four eighteen twenty-two?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of four eighteen twenty-two with corrections.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Really? Uh, motions may be seconded to approve the minutes, four eighteen twenty-two, any discussion?
Yeah, I think we just need to add, uh, what happened after the exec session, which I think.
Kelly did send it to me, but I didn't update them.
That was my fault.
And then revised, because I didn't really changes, I don't want to keep sending you guys revised minutes, so I figured I would just do one.
Okay.
I think it also says Planning Commission came out of executive session, I don't think anybody saw that, just changed that to second.
Now they're overlapping.
Half of us were there.
Yeah, I know, I saw you figured it was one more in. Thank you.
Anything else on minutes? Hearing none, there's a motion to approve the minutes, four eighteen twenty-two with corrections, uh, on the, um, information for the executive session. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, point order quick.
Yes.
Uh, we do have one member on Zoom, um.
Oh, that's right.
Actually, we have to do a roll call for all.
That, that is correct, I'm, I'm sorry, I forgot about that, we do have a member that is, that is not present but is online, uh, so we do have to do a roll call vote. So I'll start with our online member, Dave, uh, motion to approve the minutes. How do you vote?
Aye.
Wendy? Kelly?
Aye.
Michael Todd, aye. Paul?
Aye.
It is unanimous, thank you all. Uh, Town Manager announcements and updates.
All right, uh, we held an emergency management meeting last Wednesday, um, we all got together, the Highway Superintendent was there, the Police Chief, both Fire Chiefs, Lynn Gerard from Golden Cross Ambulance, um, Principal Brian Martz, B J Estee, um, and the purpose of that meeting was to review our local emergency management plan and, um, update that plan. Following that, uh, update, we reviewed the applicants for the Emergency Management Director position, um, and unanimously appointed Rodrick Bates as the Emergency Management Director for the town, in addition to that, we appointed an Emergency Management Coordinator, um, Gary Graham, so, the recommendation was to put both of those gentlemen into emergency management training, so they become certified, um, that's at no additional, no cost through FEMA, um, so next week, I'm gonna be meeting with Rodrick Bates and Gary Graham, um, to go over that training and go over our local emergency management plan, and once, once they do that, then we're gonna start working on the long, the longer range plan for emergency management. Any questions about emergency management? All right, Transfer Station, the Transfer Station Joint Committee held a meeting on the thirteenth of April, um, and basically the purpose of that meeting was to, uh, find or finalize as good as we can, um, our, our multi-town agreement, so, the town of West Windsor approved the, approved the allocation, um, and we just want to come to a mutual agreement, um, on, on the, on the rest of the things such as the permit sticker policy, right now we have an interim permit sticker policy, and we want the same policy in all three towns, so that all three towns function the same when they go to the transfer station. So Tom Kennedy from Regional Planning drafted a, drafted a new, uh, Um, so Tom Kennedy from Regional Planning drafted a, drafted a new, uh, permit sticker policy, sent it to all three, um, all three joint committee members, or four, four joint committee members, and, um, I'll be reviewing that soon, and we'll have another meeting to review it, and then it shoots out to all three select boards for review. We also reviewed, um, and discussed the compactor at the transfer station, um, so once we, once we get deeper into that, I'll be bringing that forward. Any questions on the transfer station?
When do you, when do you, uh, see the, um, that, that contract being, or the tri-town agreement being completed and brought to the select boards, a projected date?
I'm thinking mid-June.
Okay.
First or second meeting in June, probably the second meeting, maybe even somewhere into July. Right now, we have an interim agreement that seems to be working well, but these are just.
Just wanted an idea.
Yep.
Yeah, that's fine.
Uh, solar project, construction has been completed at the town garage. Um, a final walkthrough, an inspection will take place probably next week, I think they want to do it this week. But I didn't want to bother Ray on his vacation.
Thank you.
Um, so we, we've pushed it off to next week. So if anybody's interested in attending that final walkthrough, let me know, and let me know when you're available, and we can schedule it, um, around that time. The fire dr- truck, um, so the award letter was sent to Dingy Machine Company, and denial letters were sent to the three that didn't get the bid. Um, and today, Larry Dingy, Darren Spalding, and I held the, held the meeting and came up with a proposed payment structure that I'm gonna give to the treasurer tomorrow. Uh, we're looking at October when the chassis comes in, and we're looking at, um, probably somewhere in June of next year, when the actual truck comes in at the earliest, it could be even the fall of next year. So that's where we're at with that. Any questions on the fire truck?
You didn't ask any questions on the solar project, and I had a couple.
Okay, I'm sorry, let's go back.
Actually, I had one. Uh, where are we at with our contractual, contractual commitments, uh, everything being?
Everything's, everything's going well. Um, the last, the last question that was asked was for our new meter numbers, um, and I believe Suzanne got those to, got those to the solar company, and we're still working on the decommissioning fund. So the treasurer's and I and David Russell are working together to figure that decommissioning fund out. Originally, in the contract, it didn't specify who sets it up and whose name, and we did come into an agreement that it will be in the town's name.
Thank you.
Uh, public hearing notice, this is just a reminder that we're gonna have a public hearing, um, on May sixteenth, which is in two weeks, uh, to hear public comments on the adoption of the proposed zoning district map of Weathersfield Table of Districts and Uses, Aquafer Overlay District Regulations and Section Seven Definitions. Uh, so this information is available upstairs at the town office, anybody wishing to learn more about it. Um, Ryan Gumbart's here on Wednesdays, um, so feel free to come into the office or give us a call, and, and we can explain more or be present at the second meeting in May.
Okay, and, uh, I want, I want this to be in the minutes. The warning and information postings occurred last week sometime?
Yeah, last week, I can't remember the exact date, I think it's actually on that sheet right there, I mean, we can look it up, but it's, it's well within the statute.
And, and it would be fourteen days from today, so it's still outside of the fifteen. The, 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 the law requires not less than fifteen days, not more than one hundred and twenty. So this has been warned, uh, properly and is posted properly?
Correct, it's been warned on the website, it's, it's available, um, on the website right now, it was last week. It's been posted at both post offices, it's on our bulletin outside, it's on our bulletin upstairs.
Good.
And we're announcing it now.
Thank you. Is that it for, is that it for you? Brandon?
That's all.
Any questions for Brandon? Hearing none, um, number seven, large gathering permit, Center Church Meeting House and Plains and Reservoir, Reservoir Road Intersection. Um, Brandon, your?
Yeah, so we received two large gathering permits, um, they're both in the packet, one's on, at Center Church, the other's, uh, the lace up for Laura Five K Walk and Run and a half mile children's race event on June twenty-fifth. This, according to Suzanne, it was reviewed these to the large gathering? Okay, you did, okay. Um, so the police chief has, has approved this, both fire chiefs have approved this, and the highway superintendent approved it. So that's where we're at with that.
Okay. He got you good there.
He did.
He cut me, I don't know.
Okay, um, any questions on these, uh, what, what is the purpose, uh, for the center meeting church? Uh, is it a wedding or something?
Funeral.
Funeral. Says funeral right on it.
Oh, I do.
Celebration of life.
Oh, okay. Good. Uh, and Plains Road, Reservoir Road Intersection? Oh, 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 okay, that's, uh, yeah.
Laura McNaughton.
Ethan McNaughton.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, very good. We just signed these, right, we, we, do we need to take, take a, do we, do we need a motion to?
Yeah, a motion to.
Motion to approve, uh, the two large gathering permits, A, Center Meeting, uh, Center Church Meeting House, uh, and that is for?
May fourteenth, between one and four P M.
Yep. And, and the second is, uh, B, Plains and Reservoir Road Intersection, which is the, um, I think that's a memorial, uh, what do they call that, a?
Walk and run.
Walk, run for, um, uh, Ethan McNaughton, uh, wha- wha- I'm sorry. Laura, Laura McNaughton, yes, I'm sorry, Ethan.
Laura Cody McNaughton.
Yep. Um, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion for both of those.
And a second?
I'll second them.
Second by Wendy. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the large gathering permits, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Where's Dave?
Uh, that's right, we, yeah, we, that's right, we gotta do a roll call again.
Dave's gone. Dave's gone.
Oh, okay, well.
No roll call.
So, aye.
If Dave's not on, then I.
Um, okay, uh, then we'll record, uh, Mr. Fuller has apparently left the meeting at this time, so we will not take a roll call unless he reappears.
Just curious, there's, who's on the left?
I believe that's June Brink, she just turned her camera off.
Okay.
I'll hold.
Somebody just.
It won't hurt, just continue to do a roll call vote, if Mr. Fuller's not there, he won't vote.
Sure.
Wendy?
Somebody just signed into our Zoom.
Yeah.
Kelly?
Signed back.
Michael Todd, aye.
Okay.
Aye, Paul, Tom and I.
And I don't see Mr. Fuller online at this time.
Yes. Strange.
Just absent, um, for that vote. Um, vote to approve small business grants. Brandon?
All right, um. Let's see here. So, round two of the small business grants were extended, um, and, and previously, Everett Bingham Enterprises applied, and we denied that application because he did not meet all of the submission requirements, um, and since that time, the, the daycare was not able to submit their submission requirements on time, um, so they withdrew their application. Ascutney Market did submit their application, and they meet all the submission requirements. So these applications were reviewed based on grant eligibility, priorities, and submission requirements. Um, I do want to disclose that I do have, uh, business with, with one of the, um, with one of the applicants, Everett Bingham Enterprises were currently under contract. Um, so I just wanted to disclose that, um, it did not affect, uh, my review of these applicants, um, but I did want to disclose that I, I did talk with Mike about a potential conflict of interest, and I don't know what, I don't vote on this, um, but I did want to make that disclosure.
And that is what I told him, that just disclosure and you don't vote, so it's not a conflict. Do I hear a motion to approve, uh, the small business grants, round two, uh, for Scott Rogers LLC Ascutney Market two thousand dollars, Everett Bingham Enterprises Tool Distributor two thousand dollars?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Paul, motion, Kelly, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Who's, who's on the phone now?
Oh, good.
It does look like Dave's back.
Right.
Dave, are you back?
One says Jeff, and one says Olivia.
Did that unmute me, Mike, or no?
Yeah.
Wait a minute.
Yeah.
Am I, am I, am I okay now?
Yeah, you're okay now.
Yeah, right. Now, the, 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 all the connections, the connections went south, so, um. I heard the motion, so I'm okay with it.
Okay, so we will do a, a, uh, roll call vote, Mr. Fuller just voted, Wendy?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Michael Todd, aye.
Paul, Tom and I.
It's unanimous. And, and Dave, in case you missed it, when, when you, um, got lost, the, the last motion was carried forward to, to, to none, um, I, because you were gone, uh, and, and that was, uh.
Yeah.
Large gathering.
The large gathering permits.
Um, yeah, the only comment that I would add to that would be that you may, I, I'm involved with the, are you there?
Yes.
Um, I'm involved a little bit with that, with the Ethan McNaughton one, and judging by, like, when that happened two years ago, that, that might be like a thing that kind of evolves, they may ask for a road closure for a little bit too, because there's so many people, so it's a, it's a work in progress, and it's, and it's really, it's really good, and it's a lot of fun.
Okay, well, good. Well, thank you, thank you for that. Um, we also have new cards here, Dave, um, that Brandon's issued, the phone number cards and stuff.
So I, I gotta tell you real quick, um, Ray Stapleton's house number is on there, but his cell phone number's not.
Oh, good.
So.
So we can call Mike Lisa.
I don't even do that.
You'll have an updated one next week with a cell phone number, um.
I'll call Lisa.
But all the other phone numbers, all the other phone numbers are all right.
Haven't talked to him in a while.
Okay. Um, Kendrick's Road, Kendrick's Corner Road Paving Project.
Uh, so on September twentieth, the Weathersfield Select Board voted to take eighty-six thousand three hundred and seventy-one out of the reserve account now, and fifty thousand from the current paving budget for a total of a hundred and thirty-six thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars, um, for paving Kendrick's Corner Road and to award the contract to Pike Industries. Um, the intent was to pave Kendrick's Corner Road before the end of twenty twenty-one, and if not, to complete that project this spring. Um, so Caleb Connor from Pike Industries contacted us and notified us that he will be looking to begin the project this week, um, but there is an increase in price of seventy-three hundred and sixteen dollars and forty cents since last year. So the purpose of this agenda item is to request an increase in the budget for this project from a hundred and thirty-six thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars to a hundred and forty-three thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty cents.
Okay, um. Let's, I want to get the motion on the floor first, and then we'll ask the questions. So, do I hear a motion to approve? Motions always have to be in the affirmative, um, and you either pass or fail. So do I hear a motion to, um, uh, approve the funding increase from one hundred and thirty-six thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars to one, one hundred and forty-three thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty cents? This is an increase of seven thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars and forty cents from the original quote. Do I hear that motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Do I hear a second? And we have a second, so a motion, second, now we get into discussion, and the first question is, Brandon, can you explain two things, number one, a, a bit of the reason for the increase, and where's the money coming from?
Um, so I'm going to, I'll answer question number two.
Okay.
And then I'm gonna pass it over to Ray, he's been in contact with Caleb, um, and he has more information on that. If, if the board does decide to move forward with the project with the price increase, it can either come from highway surplus funding from last year, or, I mean, from the projected surplus from this year, or we could take it from reserves.
And you're up on point number one?
Uh, the, the reason for the increase is the cost of asphalt, the liquid asphalt that goes into the pavement when they make it.
Yep.
Has gone up exponentially since last year, and it was in the contract where the A C, um, fees could change, and, um, it changed this much. He's not charging any extra for gas or diesel fuel, it's just to offset the liquid asphalt that gets in, put into the, uh, mix when they make it.
Okay. Anything else?
I would, I would advise the board to go ahead with the project, if you were to put it out to rebid, you're gonna be looking at prices anywhere from eighty-seven to ninety-six dollars a ton instead of the sixty-seven dollars a ton we currently have. I did look at that.
And other increases could be factored into that as well.
Correct.
As I understand. Uh, any, Kelly, any, any question? Paul? Um, when Brandon first got ahold of me on this, um, uh, the number was a lot higher, uh, as a, a possibility, it, just not really sure, and, uh, uh, you know, there was some discussion about, you know, could they, could they, would they, should they? And I, I told Brandon to get ahold of him and just reach an agreement that works for everybody.
Yep.
You know, um, the idea was to get it done last.
I have a question.
Hang on a second, uh, I'll, I'll get right with you. Uh, the, the idea was to get it done last year, and unfortunately, it was late in the season and, and that couldn't happen. As Ray just pointed out, the contract did allow for an increase. So, um, uh, you know, with that, I, I think, I think the increase is fairly modest considering where things are at. Dave, go ahead.
The only question I have is, who caused the delay? It was not the town, it was Pike. They chose not to pave after given the green light to pave. So, they inflicted the delay. Now, I'm listening to the cost of paving and everything, but I would, I would look up in the contract about that particular item, because they may have had the ability to charge or have a, like, a rider in there, however, they chose to say, we'll do it in spring. And that's a, that's the difference now, from saying to the town said, can you hold off, the town didn't ask that, so.
Well, um.
I get it, I listened, I just heard that, you know, if you rebid, if you rebid and, you know, it's gonna be more money, and we can go over that thing a hundred times, but the contract was signed, uh, as it was, and, um, so.
Paul? Just quickly.
Guess that's what I have to say about that.
I, I don't remember, was, what's, when we, the contract was signed, was it signed to be done in a certain timeframe? What was the timeframe?
Contract was signed October sixth, and they were gonna try to fit us in, but there was such a delay in getting the contract to that point.
I know, right, but.
They, they did not have the time last fall to get it, and when they did have time, it was too cold.
Okay.
When, when? When did this discussion first begin with the town and Pike Industries?
We got the bid back in May, so it was June, the first meeting in June.
May and June. Um.
Voted on.
And it didn't get voted on until October.
Um, no, September.
September?
September twentieth it was voted on.
September twenty. Dave?
What's that?
Um, well, the question, the question that I asked is, when did this discussion with Pike and the town begin? And, and Ray's answer was May and June. And.
Yes.
And the contract was signed on September twentieth. Um, Wendy's asking, how come it took from May until September for the town to take action on, on the, uh, contract?
Because there was an overlap of two, there, there was an overlap of two financial years to pay for the project. We were using funds that weren't gonna be derived until after July first, and then taking funds out of reserve account that was prior to July first, the funding mechanism was not in place at the time, not in total.
Okay. Okay.
I wasn't here, so I just wanted to know what the, because of it being so late in the fall.
And, and I know, and I knew Dave knew the answer to that question.
Okay.
Um, and, but that in and of itself does kind of put the town in, into that position where we do maybe have some culpability in that. Um, you know, being so late in the year. Um, Paul?
My, my main reason for the question, I was just curious if there was any contractual thing in there for the timeframe to, you know, to go along with what, what Mr. Fuller had said about, you know, um, that we did award it, but then what was our timeframe? So it was more of a, well, we'll try to get to it. We didn't really lock down and saying it needed to be done by a certain time. So that, some of that is probably kind of-
And, and, and even, and even after that, thank you, thank you, Paul, and even after that, Paul ma, I mean, um, um, Ray makes another really good point. If you were to back up and start over, it's probably gonna cost you a lot more than what these numbers are right now.
I, I got another question, Mike.
Go ahead, Dave.
Does, does it, does the, does the number that's now in front of you, and I'm on the phone, so I don't see anything.
Okay.
Does the number now in front of you say at a cost not to exceed X? So there's no more, there's no more games in this? Does it say?
It doesn't.
A, a finite number.
It doesn't, but we could put that in the motion. We could amend the motion to say that.
I'm, I'm, I'm up for that. I'm up for resolution. I'm up for that. If it says the cost not to exceed whatever the number that Dave just agreed to, then I, then I think we should just move on and then
Oh.
it's not worth a seven thousand dollar fight, but I just don't want it to, I don't want another surprise saying, oh, by the way, it's gonna be a hundred and fifty-five or something.
Very good.
No, I, I, I will amend my motion to, uh, to say not to exceed a hundred and forty-three thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty cents for this.
Wendy, you had the second? She's good with that. So that, that's, that's taken care of, Dave. Thank you.
Yep.
Good call.
Yep, I'm in.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Uh, roll call vote. I'll start with you, Dave. Go ahead.
Yep, aye, aye.
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Michael Todd, aye.
Can we say E? Or O? Or U?
E-I-E-I-O. That's Dave's favorite song. E-I-E-I-O.
That would be me.
Thank you all.
That's right.
Um, and let me see, dump truck, uh, review for RFP. Uh, Brandon or Ray, who's up?
I'll just kick it off. The purpose of this agenda item is to review the specs. Um, and, go ahead, Ray.
The fire truck one. Where's the?
And once the specs are agreed upon, um, we develop the RFP and advertise it.
Page forty-one of the packet, if anyone's looking.
Yep. Thank you.
So we're looking for a, um, class,
page forty-one of sixty-four in the packet.
When you scroll on, it should be up and then-
Left top left corner.
Yeah, but it says, uh, it's the wrong one.
What do you mean?
To borrow funds not to exceed two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That's not, that's for the fire truck. That's not the-
Yeah, so that's, that's been-
You said the other one. I saw the other one.
Yeah, that's been updated.
It's not updated in our thingies.
Oh, it hasn't been updated on the website. Whoops. Um, so on the website, it does show the fire truck article. Um,
Thank you, Kelly, for-
Yeah, she notified me this weekend.
I caught it this weekend.
Um, so the article-
That's a big dump up, Ray.
The article, shall the voters of the town of Weathersfield authorize the select board to borrow funds not to exceed seventy thousand dollars for a period not to exceed seven years for the purpose of purchasing a truck and snow, uh, slash snowplow for the maintenance of town highways? The total cost of the truck will not exceed one hundred thousand dollars, of which thirty thousand shall come from the Highway Equipment Acquisition Fund. And the purpose of this is to replace the 2012 F-550.
Okay, who's next? Ray?
So the purpose of this, um, bid is to replace the 2012 F-550 with a plow and a sander and a dump body, electric over hydraulic dump body. Um, the original, um, discussion was to replace it with a three thousand gross vehicle weight heavier truck. Um, the same size, but the, the suspension is heavier duty. Um, and to have a stainless steel dump body for, uh, using it for salt, and to have live hydraulics. We have a live dump instead of the electric dump, and that would allow us to have a tailgate sander, which is a lot easier use than an insert sander, and can handle the sand and a, a wing, and a plow and a wing, like a municipal plow and wing. Um, that was, um, changed over to, um, the funding was, it was, it's gonna be about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Now it's down to a hundred thousand, so I've been reviewing it, um, trying to make some changes. This Ted Green Ford paper that you see is actually a West Windsor truck that was delivered in 2019. It's a F-550 regular cab, has basically everything that we need on it. Um, and the body itself is the next page, which is Viking Civs. Um, this does reflect keeping the stainless steel body. Um, you'd have to look for the West Windsor one, not the Weathersfield one, sorry. Anyway, the body spec is, um, a nine-foot live hydraulic dump body made out of stainless. Uh, it's a tailgate sander to be able to spread salt, sand, and mixtures, and a municipal full trip plow, no wing, just the plow. Um, with all the strobe lights that are needed, um, backup alarm and, um, backup cameras. Uh, it's been stripped down. You can see the options at the bottom are just to show you the prices that were cut out. Uh, you need to include, sorry, the, the four-inch auger, stainless steel auger and the stainless steel body. Um, the reason I kept the stainless steel body is this vendor in particular has one left over from last year at last year's prices. Uh, if we go with full, a, a full steel body this year, um, the prices for that steel body are gonna be higher than the stainless steel body that from the one that was left over, so I wanted that option to be on the table for the bids, so we can get that quote. Um, it's, it's been cut back. I'm hoping, I'm hoping that we can even get a chassis. All the dealerships like Ford, uh, Ford and Dodge have stopped making fleet vehicles for at least a year, and they're no longer offering fleet cost at least until 2023. Um, my thought is to ask for a nineteen thousand five hundred pound gross vehicle weight up to a twenty-two thousand five hundred pound gross vehicle weight. Uh, that allows you to get an F-600 or an F-550 or a fifty-five hundred Chevy or a CV International or a Dodge Ram, whatever, all these more vend, all, more vendors will be able to bid. Um, I can tell you, I've been talking to the salesman at Ford, and the difference between an F-550 and an F-600, they're the same exact size. The only difference is in the suspension. It's a twenty-two thousand pound gross vehicle weight truck instead of a nineteen thousand pound gross vehicle weight truck. And he said the prices are pretty much the same. They're, they're not very much off on price at all, and he cannot get a F-550 right now. Um, that being said, by having the spec for nineteen thousand five hundred to a twenty-two thousand five hundred allows us to cast a wider net and see what's out there. Any questions?
Yeah, two.
Go.
I can. I was curious, this Ted Green Ford, what was this for West Windsor? Why is this in our packet?
Um, because it's an example of the chassis. That's an F-550 chassis.
From 2018?
Correct, and that's, um, for the spec wise, that's what you'd be looking at if you got a F-550 and it's gross vehicle weight of nineteen thousand five hundred pounds.
I, I don't mean to be mean by saying this, but so that, that price that's here on this letterhead for 2018 is representative of a price of 2021, 22?
The price is not the representation. The, the representation here is just for the, what's going to be on the truck.
Thank you, that's, I think-
The price is not even, yes, this is just the representation of the chassis itself.
It didn't make any sense.
It's gonna be even more than that.
The second thing, quite frankly, whether, what chassis you get, what, I, I want you to get the best you can get and the most you can get. You've only got so much money to use, so in my mind, make it work, figure out what you can do. I, I mean.
There was, there's also a price, I don't know if it's in here or not, um.
I don't care if it's a F-50 or F-600, it's-
I did, I did get a quote for a seven-year, um, warranty on a Ford. Uh, I didn't get any from any other vendors. That's as far as I could get in the, the time I've been working on it. And it was about a sixty-five hundred dollar price for a seven-year, a hundred and fifty thousand mile extended warranty.
Um, my question, uh, would be with the suspension. Um, it, when we look at the truck that you have now, what is the, what is that truck rated at? Nineteen something?
Nineteen five.
Nineteen five. When you go to the twenty-two, what does that do to the truck, the body of the truck? Does it change the height or?
It's heavier duty suspension, heavier duty springs.
Right, so the springs are, are bigger, but it doesn't, but nothing go, it doesn't raise it up in the air any higher than what you've got now?
Um, if it does, it's about three inches.
Okay, okay.
It wouldn't be much. I mean, the springs might be stiffer and higher.
Okay.
But, um, again, the, the, the pictures we had when you guys were looking at this, that, and that CV International looks huge.
Yep.
It's the same height that the body has an F-550. The cab is higher because the frame is a straight rail frame. It's a dump truck frame instead of having a bend like a pickup does.
Okay.
That's the biggest difference between a CV, like an International, a Chevy or a Ford. Fords are all like a pickup style frame. They're not a straight frame.
Um.
They all have same-sized tires.
And that's not an issue for anybody?
Um,
Really?
The only issue, the only issue I, I, I foresee is we're not gonna be able to get, unless we get a brand-new body made this year, special for this truck, which is gonna be a lot more money, um, we won't be able to get the option of having the sides that drop. And the guys like the sides that drop, because you run aside of the road, you can be on the ditch and, um, I just, I, I, um, with what we have for funding, it's gonna be really hard to get a body made and still be under a hundred thousand dollars. And to have a special order body with a side though.
Just a dumb question. I'm not as much used to some of these, like, heavy-duty trucks, but, uh, we only looking at Ford? Did we look at Chevy? Did we look at-
We're looking, we're looking at everything.
Okay.
Um, I, there's a Ford dealership and an International dealership right across the river, so it's easy to get in contact with them. There's now a, uh, uh, Dodge dealer at the old Jeep place, and they do have a fifty-five hundred, um, Dodge, but the price is to get the same rating with a diesel engine. And then now they can't find fuel pumps for diesel engines, so those are like a year and a half or two years out too.
I, I was just, I was just asking.
Yeah. Um, there was something else I was gonna add that I thought of, but anyway.
Um, back, back when we were doing this before, um, there, there was a truck that was supposed to be coming in, I think, in, in Clermont Ford. Did that ever happen? Is it available, or did, did it ever come in, or?
Um,
We looked at, did we?
I have not received any. I didn't know there's a truck coming in that we're supposed to look at.
Well, I, I don't know. I'm not saying that we were supposed to look at it. We had the opportunity to. I suppose it was one.
They have, um, they have several trucks over there on the lot. One of them is a F-550. It's a gray F-550, um, nineteen thousand pound gross vehicle weight, and it has an Iroquois body. Um, the body's really tall. Um, it, I mean, it's nice. It, it's a nice truck, but it's electric over hydraulic, and in order to get, um, I, I've been trying to figure out how to get electric, whole electric over hydraulic system and have it work. Uh, we'd have to have, electric sanders aren't great with sand, straight sand. They work great with fifty-fifty blend and salt, but they don't work great with just sand.
And you gotta have a vibrator. You gotta shake them.
Anyways, um, that's, that's why I'm really trying to get a hydraulic, um, full hydraulic system, Latin resale. I know it doesn't matter to a lot of folks, but the resale's a lot better. Um, and, you know, a Fisher V plow is about the same price now. If you get a stainless Fisher V plow or Fisher V plow, um, you're, you're looking about the same money as a straight edge, um, municipal, heavy-duty municipal highway plow.
Any other questions? Anybody?
Hi, you.
Go, Dave.
Well, I got a couple of, you know, I, I gotta, I, and I, and I think the whole board will go for this. When we heard that, um, when we heard the number of, uh, sixty-five hundred or seven thousand dollars for, for a warranty, that, that is a absolute must. So however this package fits together with the engines or whatever that's going on now, um, that, that's, that, that's gotta be included in whatever's going on. So I, I can't believe that the board won't support that because of the issues with the, today's engines. Um, second, I, I cringed a little bit when I heard that, that the new body may not have drop-down sides. I want, I, I really wanna remember what this truck's gonna be. It's a support truck, and it's not necessarily just a sand truck. I mean, we only sand, I don't know, three, four months of the year. That leaves eight months that we're not sanding or salting. And I would rather attack that problem with another trade on one of the other six-wheelers. So, um, I don't know if it's a good idea to keep getting bigger and bigger trucks, and then we don't have any support vehicles that we need to do other tasks for eight or nine months, not just plow and sand. So, I, you know, I know, Ray, when you come over to see me after this, the vote happened and whatever else, I, I just, I, I have a habit of looking down the line on the next trade and, um, on some of these things, and I don't, just to wrap me up, I really am convinced of the warranty. And, um, I'm not too bothered about the, the GVW problem or not problem. I would like to make it functionable to all the workers who are not young men, um, and three inches of a body height. It's quite a bit when you get to be fifty, sixty years old, so, um, that's, that's all I have to say.
Anything?
We, we could put out for the drop sides, um, I'm just, I'm afraid it's gonna be over the hundred thousand dollars. And we can pay for the warranty in a different way maybe, but it says not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars, and that's the total cost of the truck, and if you're buying it with the truck, that's part of the cost of the truck. So there's seven thousand for the sixty-five hundred for a warranty that's included in that hundred thousand. Well, I, I agree. I wa, I want a warranty as well. I, I just, I-
Does this have to be, Mr. Chairman, does this have to be made tonight, decision tonight? I, we, we, but I, you know, I don't have a problem with doing that. I just, we have the package to put together. I, I, there's no way you're gonna get me vote without a warranty, because it's just really, really important.
Well, a, and I, it wasn't, um, it wasn't presented to me that it was a, actually anything more than informational tonight so that we could figure out what to do, and, and it sounds like that's what we're doing. Uh, I, so, I mean-
Yep, okay.
I, I was hoping to get, uh, maybe get it, the spec at least approved, so we can get going on, on making a bid packet.
Yes. Um, uh, well, what would the options be looking like? Uh, what, I mean, we put this out to the voters, we have a hundred thousand dollars. Brandon, how, how do we, how do we get the warranty? How do, how do, how do we get the box?
I'd like some, I'd like some, I'd like some time to chat with the treasurer about that. And, uh, can we bring this back on May 16th?
Well, but that, that, that's fine in, in regards to extra funding, but he wants a decision on chassis, which isn't really gonna change much, right?
Um, no, I'll, we could start working on it the way it is, if you guys haven't got a huge problem with, with chassis. If you, if you want, I just need to know, if you wanna go ahead and throw it out there for us building your body, or having a company build a body with the sides that drop, I'm fine with that, but it's going to be a definite, a lot more money this year than it is last year prices, just forewarning you.
Okay.
I don't want it to stick or shock.
And so the chassis request that you're asking for is between nineteen and twenty-two?
Correct.
That's all you're looking for, as long as you can target.
And the, the packages are, you know, the plow prep package, um, the, the payload package. If you're gonna get a nineteen thousand pound five hundred truck, you get a payload package, and it helps increase the weight.
Yeah.
Um, and the tow package. So you have the right transmission, and you have the rest pa, the rest already on the truck.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, that's the other thing I was gonna bring up. The trucks over there, the bodies are fine, but they don't have any of the strobe lights or anything that are, are needed for us.
Mm-hmm.
We'd have to put those in aftermarket if we were buying something off the lot like that.
Okay.
That's just,
Yep.
observation I had over there. That's, that's it.
Okay. Um,
Mike, what's the, what's, Mike, I got a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Um, well, you know, I, I'm okay with letting Ray do that, because what's the worst that'll happen? We put in the, we, we have a little, like, uh, what's there, like a little line in there saying that he finds out that it's gonna be a lot more money than what we thought, and maybe it is, and then we need to regroup again? I mean, the voters, you know, gave us the authority to do it and to frame it within that. Well, if it doesn't work, then we regroup and, and rethink.
Okay. How's everybody else feel about that? Wendy? Kelly? Paul?
Yeah, I'm fine, yeah.
Ray, you're good?
Yeah, thank you.
So that means, go do your thing.
So I'm putting out for a body with drop sides.
Uh, yes, okay. Yeah, you, you need a body with drop side.
Yep.
Uh, Brandon, do you want a motion on this? Do we need a motion on this right now? This is not really, this is just discussion on the RFP preparation.
Yeah, well, so are we all set to advertise the RFP and then you guys will review the bids? Or do you wanna see the RFP on May sixteenth?
I also, the other thing I need to clarify is when we send this RFP out, we're gonna add a sideline for a seven year warranty.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes. Yeah, well, Dave, you know, I mean, no, let's see that. Um, no, Dave said he, you know, he won't support it without the warranty, and I, I think that would, it would be foolish.
I just think it should be a separate, you know, addition to the, on the bid.
Okay. Um, do you need a motion for this tonight, Brandon?
No, my question is whether the, the warranty would be considered a part of the truck. That's the question that I have, so I'm just gonna ask.
And, and I would have that question as well. I, Ray, you just got done saying that, well, that makes it part of the truck. Um.
I'm not, I'm not sure, and that's why I just need some time. So we'll, we'll figure out those details and we'll update you guys on May sixteenth.
I think we can do that.
I just wanna be transparent with the public. I know I'm thinking that we're taking stuff off and paying for it separate, and now the price is more, and that's, that's my concern.
Um, yeah.
Yup, I'm good, I'm good with all that.
Yeah, me too. Okay. All right, so, so you know what, you guys know what to do.
Yep.
Get your RFP. Okay.
Thank you.
You're, you're welcome. Thank you. Um, uh, proposed future agenda items. We still got select board goals on proposed future agenda items.
They're gonna be in October.
It'll be over. We plan for next year. Um, uh, some of these, some of these do, I mean, select board goals need, needs to land on the agenda. Uh, Brendan, let's make sure that's on the agenda for the next meeting.
What was that?
Select board goals.
Yup, got it.
And, you know, anybody has any ideas of what you wanna accomplish this year? Um.
Our, our main goal is ARPA funds, to figure out what to do with that ARPA funds.
I, I agree, Kelly. That's a big, that's a big task.
It's gonna be a lot of task right there, and we won't know until next meeting, right?
Um, second, second meeting, yeah, next, next.
May, May sixteenth, yeah, we'll have the prioritization plan to, uh, to present.
Paul?
I know it's early, but I just, from the past couple of years, I wanna make sure that we have insurance stuff, that, you know, all the insurance, um, the healthcare insurance figured out.
Conversation packaging.
Yeah, like, I'd really like to start that early, um, just so that we don't run into the last minute everything, because it's important to a lot of people, and we understand that.
Couple, couple more and we're done.
Yeah, I know. And, and then obviously, I mean, we've all, we've all been through, some of us more than others, but the budget stuff, I think, I, I think we're gonna have some, I think we're gonna have some questions on, on this coming one, so we might need a little extra time to make sure where we're at before we even start trying to figure out where we're gonna put money. So.
Keeping you up? Um, okay, um, this is a future agenda, so.
Yeah.
Think about this for the next meeting, uh, people, and then we'll, you know, uh, Ray, go.
I, we did get a request about a road, to review a road. Is that gonna, can we put that on the future agenda or?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, Mr. Caniston.
I haven't had, I haven't had a chance to talk with, uh, Mike about that yet, but I just got.
I got another email, so.
Which road are you talking about?
Highway ninety-four.
Oh, okay.
On John Caniston's property.
Yeah.
It's a cow pasture that apparently is now still a road that.
Yup.
Yeah. Google Maps now sending people through his cow pasture.
We actually have two that are coming up.
Town manager's goals is also listed here as, uh, future. Uh, if you've got any, uh, any, your, your eyes on a couple of things you might wanna focus on for this year.
Yeah, I, I agree with Paul. Um, we're gonna be working on the budget. I think we're gonna have a budget committee.
Okay.
An active budget committee this year. Um, and also, you know, ARPA and.
Okay. Um, I, I'm just kinda trying to go through what is listed here already as proposed future agenda items, so people will know what's coming at them. Uh, business personal property tax. This is that personal property tax that comes out of the Lister's office for, uh, um, that assesses businesses for personal property used in business. Um, and, uh, there has been a request, uh, forwarded, uh, from a, a resident, uh, to review this and, and, uh, consider, uh, getting rid of it. Now, this is something that I believe has to go before the voters. Is, is that correct, Brandon?
It does.
It's not a decision that could be made here. Um, so there's, there's information to be had there. Um, you know, one of those things is, um, uh, y- you know, you have to consider, um, I, I brought this forward as a budget committee member years ago, and I, I don't wanna get too deep into it right now, just so you think about it. Um, that, um, to get rid of it. A- and, and part of the discussion went into the infrastructure that exists in this town from large companies that, you, you know, uh, it's millions and millions of dollars that's being, um, taxed as personal property. And that's why they went with a, um, an exemption, and they set the exemption at ten thousand dollars at that time. Hello? I guess that was a cough or a sneeze. So that's some of what to consider, and Brendan, you, you'll need to produce some, as I asked, some information on that when we get into that discussion.
Yeah, but we're gonna do that on, in June, or do you wanna do it in May sixteen?
Uh, no, June, June is good. We, we got a hearing on the sixteenth. We got a few other things coming up, and I'm, there's always stuff popping up between now and then. So I would push that out just a little bit further, but, uh, key fob lock system, Marne Memorial Hall. Uh, this is to eliminate, um, and this is again, future discussion, but this is to eliminate, um, actual metal keys uh, and have like a credit card swipe. So you always have, uh, you know, everybody that would have a key for the building is always time stamped whenever you come into this building. Um, and just do it that way. It also gets rid of, and Bill, it was Bill and Darren that, and Brendan that actually started to propose this to me, uh, a few weeks ago. I think it's a great idea myself. Um, you also don't, you get out of having to, uh, replace doors and locks and keys.
Yeah.
Anytime there's some sort of issue that, you know, it just, you know, you just turn off the key. That person has, they throw it away, 'cause it doesn't work anymore. You don't have to buy keys and change doors and locks and all that stuff anymore. Get away from it. So that's another item that's gonna be coming forward on, on future agenda items. Um, any, anything else, Brendan, you can think of right off the top of your head to, to get into this list?
Uh, just, just another update. I don't, I don't know if you see that black thing in the corner right there and
Oh, yes.
That one up here on the wall, and then we have five of those upstairs. They're audio video. Um, and we installed that for safety and security. Um, we met with Passive, I think, last month, and we, we put in a grant for those cameras and, um, they're Wi-Fi cameras and, um.
So Marne Memorial Hall is now, uh, video surveillance.
Yup, video and audio surveillance.
Paul?
Just a quick question on that. Do you have signs anywhere letting people know that they're, that it's being recorded? I think you legally need to put those up, don't you?
I, I think, I, I know we had to notify all employees.
Yup.
Put them up. It, it probably would be a good idea.
Have to put something on the doors.
Yeah, for, for the public and whatever.
Yup.
Just, just make sure our bases are covered.
Yup.
That's all.
Yup.
Not gonna hurt.
Um, and that's.
Hey, Mike, Mike, I got a couple of things.
Go ahead, Dave.
Um, you can't keep your eye off this ball. It's already the first meeting in May. I think the Listers had to have a formulated finalized grand list today. If they did not, they should have produced an amendment that they did not get it done again, which I find to be like troubling and, and worrisome. Uh, the, at the next meeting, we really need to start, or no later than the first meeting in June to set the tax rate, which means to get the grand list in our hands. And then, or the office does, and present us a package on what we're voting on for the tax bills, because they need to be printed the first or second week in June, so that it gets in the hands of the people that pay the bills to, on the first quarterly payment, which is August tenth. So having said all that, you've heard me say before that, that the tax bills this year are gonna be whatever the article says. For instance, you know, the, 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 let's take up the highway fund, where it said shall the town appropriate a million dollars, of which nine hundred and twenty-six thousand shall be raised by taxes. You can't change that number. You, you plug that into the grand list and you get that. However, you know, the, the auditors and Brandon has told us several times now that there's significant fund balances to be determined. We've had way too much time to be sitting on that. And I intend to make motions on these upcoming meetings before the thirtieth of June. We did not do that a year ago, or maybe it was two. We waited and all of a sudden in, in July or something, and then, and then it's too late, because the financial year is over on June thirtieth. So I, what I'd like to see happen would be this. You set up what would be the anticipated tax bill of a person, heck, you can use me if you wanna. And then see how that plugs in to the, uh, to your tax bill. And then we need to have a discussion about whether we're gonna credit people's tax bills, like we'd been talking about last couple of meetings by a penny or two, or how we're gonna achieve that discussion about fund balances. Um, it's kind of a big deal, and we're, and we're already, now we're into the first meeting in May, it's gonna be over, and we didn't do it yet, so.
Okay.
It's technically only three meetings left before the end of the financial year. Unless we have special meetings.
Yeah, uh, Brandon, do you have any information? What, what, ju- just real quick, Dave, a question to Brandon. Uh, on the grand list, did, did the Listers finalize that, do you know?
I did, I'll talk to Nate first thing in the morning, and I'll, I can shoot an email to the board and, and update you on that.
Okay. All right, Dave, you got any more?
No, that's enough.
Uh, thank you for that, though, because you're right. We need to, we do need to stay on top of that. It's very important. Um, uh, appointments. Uh, we have budget committee, uh, four vacancies. We have two names, Chauncey Tillman, Erica, Natalia, Kuma, Colma? Natalia. This is, this is, uh, most of us know this person as Natalia Golnick.
Are you?
Well, I know. Um, but, uh, just so you know, uh, Connecticut River Joint Commission Representative Howard Beach, uh, fence viewer, Roderick Bates, and that's it. Um, do I hear a motion to appoint Chauncey Tillman and Erica Colma to the budget committee? Howard Beach to the, uh, Connecticut River Joint Commission Representative, and, uh, Roderick Bates, fence viewer.
So moved.
Kelly, second? Second by Wendy. Uh, any discussion? Anybody? Nothing? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. We have one person online. Dave, go.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Michael Todd, aye. Um, approve the warrants? Paul?
I'll make, I will make a motion to approve the warrant, uh, for meeting of May tw- uh, May second, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, general fund payroll, uh, fourteen thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents. Operating expense of, in general fund, of sixty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-seven cents. Highway fund payroll, seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-one cents. And operating expense, twenty-eight thousand ninety-four dollars and forty-nine cents. Solid waste management fund payroll is one thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars and two cents. Operating expenses thirteen thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents. Library payroll, two thousand forty dollars and seven cents and zero operating expense. Um, the library endowment expense of six thousand dollars. A grand total of payroll, twenty-five thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents, and operating expense hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents.
Do I hear a second? Second by Wendy. Any discussion on the warrants of May second? Everybody's good? Motion to approve the warrants of May second, twenty twenty-two. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Dave? Dave?
Aye.
Again, what?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Michael Todd, aye. Um, thank you. Any other business? Uh, under any other business tonight, Brendan called me with something today, and I asked him, the, the board, Dave, you didn't get this, because you're, you're at home. Uh, th- this is Brendan's contract, and he called me with something that is amiss in the contract. And it's, and, and what he's pointed out is actually something that needs to be corrected to better protect the town. And, and what that is, is i- if, if you look at the amendment, and it's, uh, section three, background section three, I'm gonna read section three, so everybody hears it. The employee and employer agreed to a sign-on bonus in the amount of fifteen thousand dollar, United States dollars. The sign-on bonus, which will be paid to the employee, less applicable withholdings and deductions in one lump sum payment via the employee's first payroll of the term. If the employee resigns before his term is complete, then he must pay back a portion of the sign-on bonus unless the parties otherwise mutually agree. This is where he starts to, he's pointed out that there's a, a flaw in the contract. Is the, the, the following language. The formula for this is as follows. X equals fifteen thousand dollars, five years. Y equals the term of the contract, which is five years. Um, contract time remaining, amount due equals X times Y. In the case that the employee is terminated, the town of Wethersfield waives the sign-on bonus. What Brendan pointed out to me was that there was actually a way to get to zero here.
Can I explain that real quick?
Go ahead, Brendan.
So the spirit of this, we, we all know what the spirit of this was, but in the actual agreement, um, it says, if the employee resigns before his term is complete, then he must pay back a portion of the sign-on bonus unless the parties mutually agree. The formula is X equals fifteen thousand divided by five years. So you come to three thousand there per year. That would have, so if I resigned on year two, then I'd have to pay back nine thousand dollars. Um, Y equals the term of contract minus contract time remaining. So if you look at that, the term of the contract is five years, and then you minus the contract, you minus the contract time remaining, which right now that's four point seven five years. So if you take five years and minus it by four point seven five, you come up with point two five. And then you multiply that by three thousand, uh, by three thousand.
Point two five times three thousand, the way that.
So right now, I would only have to pay back, according to the contract, less than six hundred dollars.
Which is not the intent of the, of the language.
The intent would be fifteen thousand right now. Um, so I just wanna make that clear. I want to remove um, contract time rem- uh, excuse me. I would like to remove term of contract, so then it would be contract time remaining. So right now it'd be four point seven five multiplied by three thousand, and that would give us fourteen thousand and some change.
And what I did was I asked Brendan to have this in front of us, so we could actually see it and understand what he's talking about. Now, he's gonna create the draft language to put in front of us at the next meeting. So we can review that it's correct, and we'll vote on it then.
I think literally we just cross out, but I'd like, uh, Dave to also see this, and I'll, I'll send it to him in email.
We, you, you're not quitting in the next two weeks, are you?
No.
Okay, good. So, so, so we don't have to vote on this tonight. We'll wait until we have the, an actual document in front of us that has the correct language, and then we'll, we'll vote on it on an amendment. Yeah. So, Kelly?
I, I need to, under other business, I'd just like to make a comment. I attended the eighteen seventy-nine Schoolhouse last meeting they had.
Yes.
Um, just, they asked me if I wanted to come, so I just did it out of the kindness of my heart and went over and sat through a meeting, so. It just.
I went to one before COVID. It was nice to get to meet everybody.
Um, so the floors were, there were the one. Um, so the floors were, there were, the one floor was done.
Yeah, one room was, oh, it looks beautiful.
Cause they were sanding the day we were in there.
Yeah, and it looks, it's nice.
And, and that, that is a company that came in and did that volunteer.
For free, yeah.
One company, the one person I had for, one complaint I heard was, it looks too good for an old building.
It looks, it does look, when you compare, when you walk into that room and then you walk into old Karen McGee's old, uh, cause that's where Zach was in kindergarten.
Oh my God, yes.
Totally different.
Well, and, and, and now the discussion i- is, how are we gonna get that other room done?
Yeah.
So it all looks the same. Um, any other business?
I got a question under, under business, yeah.
Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, uh, I, you know, I logged off when you guys were talking about the, uh, the ARPA grants, uh, and you, I guess you awarded two of them, is that true?
Yes.
Okay, were there any other applicants in that round?
Uh, Scottney Market, Dave.
Were, were there any that did?
No, were there, were, were there any other applicants available for consideration?
Dave, two, were there more than that?
No, there were only, we only received two.
Okay, so where is that, where is that, um, w- was there a dollar amount that we had, uh, under that?
Twenty thousand.
Round two of grants or not?
How many did you give the first time, three or four?
So there was eight thousand in the first round.
So four.
And then there was four thousand, so there's eight thousand remaining, Dave.
So was it, so there still is eight thousand remaining?
Yeah, so if you'd like to extend it again or.
Yeah, there's eight thousand.
So I just didn't know, I didn't know whether there were any other applicants for consideration. I didn't, and I didn't know if our motion. That we ha- had for round two had a dollar number attached to it, and then I didn't know how that got used up or did it get used up or where, where is it all at?
We only continued with it. We didn't, we didn't, uh, set a new amount. We just continued for the second continuation, I think, is what we claimed it to be, or something like that.
We could give it to the recreation committee?
But, but was it, but, but do you, do you, does the minutes show it or does anybody know, was it a four thousand dollar cap or what? Brandon, do you remember that or not?
So this round, so the, when you guys established round two, it was up to twenty thousand dollars in two thousand dollar increments. And so far we funded six, so they're technically, we, we haven't used the full twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, so there's a, so maybe you and Mike can get together or whatever, I don't really know. I, I think it's a good idea to maybe to keep that on the table a little bit. I don't know, cause I hear different things about different people and. I'm not talking about, um, uh, um, people that already got them to resubmit. But on the other hand, if we made a motion to establish a certain amount of money to do that, it might make a little sense to have a round three. I mean, I, you know, when these are all over, I heard Wendy saying she's absolutely right, you know, when these ARPA funds are over, they're gone. I am hearing different people that have loans and they're not going to be transferred into grants. So some of these things work for different people, so I don't know.
Um.
I guess that's it for me.
Uh, hey, hey, Dave, what do you think about this? I, I just thought of this, but, um, I, I don't know where it goes either and, you know. Somebody can throw something at me. Um, we have some accounts in town that we use for like assisting people with fuel assistance or rent. Or some of these other things, uh, uh, could, we, we've got this eight thousand dollars, maybe we have a conversation about funding those a- accounts, uh, so that it's there.
Well, the one thing we don't, the one thing we don't wanna do is to do what, what, we don't wanna turn that into a revolving fund. The last time I knew, we had enough money in that account. I think we had two or three or four thousand dollars in there and we were having. It's, it's kind of a, it's kind of an account that you don't wanna broadcast too loudly, you know, to say, hey, come get me, cause it's free money. Um, but you don't, you obviously don't want it to have a, a reoccurring fund, you know, the ARPA struggle is like a one-time deal. So I, I don't know the answer. All I wanted to know was, was there money left over after the second round of ARPA grants for small business?
Eight, eight thousand dollars.
And I think somebody said yes.
Eight, eight, eight thousand dollars, Dave.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's the future agenda items, that's what we're talking about now, so.
Well, and that money could just stay in the.
Our, our other business, sorry.
I- i- and that money could just stay in the ARPA funds for now, for, for whatever.
Yup, could do that too. Yup.
Or like a return, you mean like a return back to the ARPA funding?
Yeah, right, back to the general balance.
Anything that doesn't get spent, it's back, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Okay, that's it for me.
Thank you, Dave.
Don't forget, don't forget to come in and sign your warrants.
Yeah, I, that's, that's what I wanna do right now, I'm gonna run.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion to second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
I heard Dave.
Yup, aye.
Good night.
Night, Dave.